Second reading of ordinance number 04-2015, amending Clackamas County Code to add Chapter 8.09, establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries, and declaring an emergency. Dan Chandler is here today, and he will give us some information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair Bernard. Since this is second reading, and you've heard most of this before, my presentation will be quite brief. This is second reading of ordinance 04-2015, establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries. This ordinance will supersede the moratorium put in place by the Commission in April of last year, and replace it with a set of time, place, and manner regulations as required by state law. I want to talk briefly about a couple of considerations that have gone into this process. On the one side, we've dealt with access to medical marijuana cardholders. We've dealt with the notion that too many restrictions would drive users to the black market. On the other hand, we've had to address concerns about proliferation, normalization, and access by youth. There are also law enforcement, neighborhood concerns, and public safety concerns on the other side. I think it's also important to note that our belief is that most, if not all, medical marijuana dispensaries will likely become recreational marijuana vendors, eventually under the provisions of Measure 91. So this really, we should characterize this as an interim step and a sort of go-slow approach. It's far easier to loosen regulations later than it is to tighten them later, once people have already established businesses. To summarize what the regulations are, chiefly there are setbacks between dispensaries 2,500 feet, 2,000 feet from schools, 1,500 feet from light rail stops, and a host of other facilities. There is a map on the wall there, under the other TV screen. I'll put it up here on this screen. And note, this is informational only. We're not adopting this map. This map is not part of the regulations. It's simply informational. There may be things that have been missed, or maybe dispensaries that have closed, or submitted applications subsequent to this. But this is essentially the effect of the setbacks as set forth today. It includes the facilities that have been effectively grandfathered under the ordinance passed by the Board in January. That would be three facilities, two on the southern end of McLaughlin, and one on 82nd Drive. So the two of McLaughlin, this doesn't show up up there, but they're on the southern end of McLaughlin, north of Gladstone, and then one on 82nd Drive, south of 224. Other time, place, and manner regulations include hours of operation, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Disposal has to be in a secure facility. There must be filtration that confines objectionable odors to the premises, and there can be no mobile vending, home occupations, or other sorts of facilities. Also, the ordinance currently requires that dispensaries be located inside the metrourban growth boundary. This is essentially because of law enforcement concerns. We're better able to police the impact in areas where we have urban levels of law enforcement than rural areas. We have much more dispersed law enforcement. Changes since the first reading of the ordinance have been relatively minor and technical. We've changed several of the "whereas" statements, those were called the recitals early on, to talk about the unincorporated area of the county. Apologies for the typo there in that first sentence. We've changed, slightly changed, the definition of medical marijuana to conform better to state law. And we've clarified the provision with respect to minors being allowed in the waiting area only when accompanying a parent or guardian who is a cardholder. Really, the next steps after this, assuming the Board passes this, will be the OLCC will adopt its regulations on recreational marijuana. The legislature is also addressing Measure 91 and recreational marijuana issues. It would be our recommendation that we appoint a formal task force to address recreational and medical dispensaries together, probably including some clarification of what the enforcement scheme will be. But once we have an idea of what the overall environment and the context is going to be, I think we'll be better able to take the next steps with respect to marijuana regulations. Unless the Commission has any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
I just want to clarify, Dan, that this does not affect the cities, right?
Absolutely not.
So, sales of, or outlets for marijuana dispensaries can occur within the cities based on whatever ordinances or languages that they have?
Correct, that's correct, Commissioner. And many of the cities are in the process now of deciding what they are going to do, and there's quite a range right now.
Right, and there's 15, 16 cities in Clackamas County, so, okay, thank you.
Commissioner, anything else? All right. So we're going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak, and I have a list up here. Shirley Morgan and Suzie Tracy are up first, and then after them, Randy Rappaport and Todd And please give your address. You don't have to give your home ad, whole address, where you live.
Good evening. My name is Suzie Tracy. I live in Estikade. I'm the Director of Defy Drug-Free Estikade Families and Youth, and it's a coalition dedicated to reducing substance use among youth. And I just want to share a couple of things with you as I encourage your stewardship efforts over this process. The FDA approves controlled substances and creates safeguards for their medical use. Once regulated, drug manufacturers market and distribute, doctors prescribe, pharmacies sell, reporting systems are established, and recall systems exist to deal with health hazards. Because medical marijuana was legalized through voter initiative bypassing science, pharmacology, and testing guidelines, these safeguards have been compromised. Medical marijuana is not new to Oregon, originally intended to treat chemo-related nausea and AIDS-wasting, inpatients not responding to traditional medicine. It was legalized by voter initiative in Oregon in 1998. Medicinal properties suggested to exist in marijuana have long been available with the hallucinogenic effects removed in FDA-approved forms known as Marinol and Sesamet. By eliminating the pleasurable side effects in uncontrolled substances, desired outcomes are controlled and the potential for abuse is reduced. In addition, two new marijuana drugs intended to reduce cancer pain, multiple sclerosis symptoms, and the incidence of intractable seizures in children with rare forms of epilepsy are currently being tested. In relation to the land use issue, land is the foundation of Oregon's environment, economy, and quality of life. Stewardship over our land profoundly affects the unique beauty, bounty, and livability of our state's communities. It is appreciated that land conservation, protection of natural resources, and wildlife, and controlling urban sprawl create challenges when translating community values into plans and standards. Oregon's land use system and UGBs enable development choices to be intentional rather than driven by private interest and profits. Expansion of urban development in rural areas is a concern because of conflicts between farm and urban activities. Untested economics should not drive long-term resource decisions. Land protection is a policy choice between using resource lands for personal gain versus the preservation of productive lands for the common good, and should not afford preferential treatment or special privilege. Common good should include attention to short and long-term community impacts, to local culture, traffic patterns, road safety, and integrity, wildlife habitat, air quality, crime rates, law enforcement capabilities, environmental contaminants, native vegetation, historical preservation, scenic byways, recreational opportunities, sustainable tourism, branding norms, economics, and overall public health. Thank you for your willingness to bear these responsibilities on our behalf.
Thank you. Shirley?
Well, good evening, Chair Bernard, and Commissioners Schrader and Savis. It's nice to see you again. I live in Welch's at PO Box 1351, and I am representing the Citizens for Public Safety, Quality of Life, and Property Values, and I will be speaking on behalf of those holding up the red cards in the audience. We have four concerns. Number one, marijuana dispensaries are not legitimate businesses, as they are federally illegal and should have been banned. Marijuana is a corrupt legality and has not found its way through the same front door that the rest of the businesses in this county have had to do. The majority of Oregon voters have said no twice to having these facilities in our communities, once with Measure 33 in 2004, and again with Measure 74 in 2010. It was our pro-marijuana legislators who pushed HB 3460 against the will of the majority of Oregon voters. And in a defiant pushback to hold jurisdictional rights, there have been over 200 of the 241 cities and 32 of the 36 counties in the state who have banned these facilities based on federal law. And though 51.9% voted yes for Measure 91 in Clackamas County, that is not a big enough margin to politically gamble with the safety of the rest of us who live here. Number two, marijuana in smoke form has never been approved as medicine by the FDA, and it is, and to lead the general public to think otherwise by allowing these types of facilities to open is a very dangerous protocol. Number three, in light of these risks, we ask the Commissioners not to allow minors to be present anywhere on the premises, as it exposes them to public safety dangers, as many of these facilities have had armed robberies and fatal shootings. Number four, we ask that you continue to uphold that these facilities not be allowed outside the urban growth boundaries. In Denver, Colorado, their police department has seen a 1,000% increase in marijuana seizures since 2011, which reveals the continued challenges that law enforcement faces. Marijuana shops that operate by cash only and are filled with pot make them an obvious, visible, bullseye target for criminal activity. In closing, we cannot ignore these threats to our communities, and on behalf of the Citizens for Public Safety, Quality of Life, and Property Values, we encourage our Commissioners to keep these values as your first priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy and Todd?
Good morning.
Morning, or afternoon.
I was here yesterday, speaking a little bit about a dispensary that we were looking to open in Rododendron, Oregon, and we've been working with the state very closely to make sure that this dispensary is safe. There is a lot of hoops you have to jump through. We're going to be, we have cameras, we have security systems, and we will have a security guard on site. What I would like to tell you is that the state, the state has approved us. We're in a very well-traveled area. We picked a site that was away from schools. We picked a site that's kind of not around anything, and the only criteria that we're not meeting right now is that we're inside, we're outside of the urban growth boundary. We do believe that recreational is coming. We'd like to remain a medical facility, and what we'd like to ask is, it doesn't appear that there's a whole lot of people here that are trying to open up medical dispensaries in Clackamas. We've been here twice, and I think only one other person has come in and said that they were looking to do a dispensary here. So we'd like to see if there would be a possibility of an exception. We have been approved already by the state. We have everything in place, and we're ready to open, and we do intend to open a medical dispensary. So we'd like to know if that is possible today for you guys to decide on.
Well, it may be part of the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I give my name, or is that cool?
Yes.
Okay. Hi there. My name's Randy Rappaport. Hello, everyone. I am a resident of Rododendron, as well as Portland. I split my time in between both locations. One of the strongest arguments for allowing a medical marijuana dispensary to open in the east portion of the county is safe access, and the other reason is business development. I consider that a secondary, of secondary importance, but that area of the county is quite depressed economically, and we would be offering jobs. We have develop, other development that we'd like to be doing in the town. But the strongest argument is safe access, because there are hundreds of cardholders outside of the urban growth boundary within 25 miles of our location, and they've been asking for safe access, and as you heard in testimony last, at the last round. And so I would ask that you grandfather our licensed facility. You know, both Todd and I have master's degrees in educational psychology. I'm a trustee of the square of, at the Pioneer Courthouse Square in Portland. I'm essentially a model citizen in this area, and we're asking that our application be grandfathered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next up is Elizabeth Russell and Erin Purchase. And please give your name and address. Thank you.
Chair Bernard, Commissioners, hello. My name's Elizabeth Russell. I live in Portland, Oregon. I work as a Coalition Coordinator in Oregon City. I work with Oregon City Together, which is a coalition of community leaders and parents and youth, dedicated to reducing substance use in Oregon City. I've been participating in the discussion group that's been developing or contributing to the ordinance that you're looking at today, and I want to just thank you for taking a firm position on the buffers around the schools and other family-sensitive areas. That's just such a critical thing, and I want you to know that last week in Oregon City, we hosted a forum on marijuana and youth, a community awareness forum. We had 150 people there, again, community leaders, parents, youth, and educators, people who really care about what is coming up. There's a lot of unknowns, and there's a lot of need to be informed, and also, you know, inside the city limits, we've got a lot of questions, and I know that's the case for a lot of communities in Clackamas County, so everything that we can do in the unincorporated areas makes such a difference. And I know that those 150 people would probably be thanking you if they were here right now as well. So my main concern that's remaining is the enforcement plan for this, for these buffers. I know already we've got one dispensary that's operating illegally in Clackamas County, and I'm a little bit unclear about how we're going to move forward protecting these buffers that were, that are written in, and especially with, you know, retail, recreational, coming down the line. So I just want to reinforce the encouragement to formally appoint a task force that can support the Commissioners in staying informed. There's a lot of moving parts in this, and I think the more attention and broad base of engagement we can have, I think we can contribute quite a bit to an informed and intelligent and comprehensive approach to this in Clackamas County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me here today. My name is Erin Purchase. My address is PO Box 1127, Oregon City. I am a parent. I am a citizen of Oregon City. I was at that meeting she discussed. I am one person that is not for the strict regulations. I was diagnosed with chronic kidney disease when I was 17 years old. I was diagnosed with chronic liver disease at the age of 24. My daughter was diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia in 2012. Her and I both used medical cannabis with great success. I used pharmaceutical drugs up until I became a medical marijuana patient. I replaced 16 medications. Not only that, I was enlightened to a lifestyle that is phenomenal. I now eat a completely organic vegetarian diet. I don't consume a drop of alcohol. I'm a much better citizen now, today, than I was four years ago, before I discovered medical marijuana. Not only that, my daughter went through three years of intensive chemotherapy without even a single Tylenol. She was able to have a smile on her face every single day. She used no narcotic medication, which, to me, is very important, because she has less of a chance of becoming a heroin addict when she's older. She used medical cannabis oil every single day. I got that at a dispensary. By banning dispensaries, you are banning children, families, from purchasing medicine for their children. I represent thousands of children all over this country using medical marijuana. In the state of Oregon, when my daughter was diagnosed in 2012, there were 50 children on the program. Today, there's over 200. There are children that I work with in our community that never were able to go to school because they constantly seize. There's no doctor in the state that was able to help them until they found medical cannabis. Now, this particular little girl that I'm discussing is in school every day for the first time in six years, and that's right here in our community. I just want you to understand that not, that this plan is not about crime and horrible behavior. By continuing to ban dispensaries and safe access to patients, you're forcing them to go to the black market, and you're forcing them to do things that are illegally, or are illegal. So I'm just here to say that I, as a citizen of Oregon City and this county, do not support the strict regulations above what the state has already put into place. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify, we're not banning dispensaries. We're just putting boundaries around schools and some of those areas, so, this actually allows them.
So next up is Jennifer Valley and, wait, didn't I just do that one?
No.
Jennifer Valley and Jeremy Wheeler. Thank you. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Jennifer Valley. I live at 10308 Southeast 96th Avenue in unincorporated Clackamas County. I think it's important to understand that medical marijuana addresses the three primary drivers of healthcare costs, number one being pain management. Approximately 9% of our population across all demographics and socio-economic demographics qualify for this program and are affected by pain, and I've been approached by a major healthcare organization over the last year, and they would like to mainstream medical marijuana, and they expect to have this available to as many as 2 million clients in this state within the next five years. And I just feel that having 90% of the county without safe access will make that kind of implementation really difficult. I really feel that medical marijuana dispensaries were the most significant healthcare reform that we've passed in the last five years, because they create community-based healthcare that costs less, does more, and creates jobs. They also address end-of-life care, which all men must die, and 80% of our healthcare costs are generated in the last two years of life. I just want to make it possible for people to die better, because I've had last rites. I've spent literally years bedridden. I know what it's like to face that journey, and if we can make it more comfortable, less painful, we can reduce the costs for everyone and make healthcare affordable for everyone. But in order to do that, we need to have safe access for those patients, and that's going to include delivery services and local access. Their caregiver needs to be able to get the medicine they need on a timely basis. We're just really looking at a huge economic boon as well with the implementation of M91. There's going to be a lot of different businesses happening that are going to create tourism on a national basis. Oregon is still the only state in the nation that allows nonresidents to come here, join the medical marijuana program, get their medicine, and go home. And because of that, I'm seeing patients from the Mayo Clinic from across this country. I see patients from Texas, New York, Missouri, and they come here because there's nothing else their doctor can do. I am the last line of treatment, but they need the ability to go to dispensaries. They need this kind of safe access, and we need to be able to promote this on a national basis. There's a city in Texas, all they do is cancer research and treatment, and I want to have the same thing here in Clackamas County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeremy?
My name is Jeremy Wheeler. I'm from Lane County. I'm actually a prospective dispensary owner here. I'm looking to open up a dispenser in the north end of McLaughlin Boulevard in your urban growth boundary. The only thing that precludes me from doing that is about 100-foot. Kids would have to physically fly over a five-lane highway to cross to get in with the 2,000-foot buffer to my proposed location. So again, I'm here to express my concerns over the additional school buffers the county's proposing for medical marijuana dispensaries. I believe making the school buffers more than twice the state and federal limit is sending the wrong message. It unjustly hurts medical marijuana patients, prospective medical marijuana businesses, the potential economic benefits. I believe the current 1,000-foot state buffers are substantial enough, as found by this state, Colorado, Washington, and the federal government. I do not believe imposing very restrictive buffers over top of any other business, including bars, nightclubs, strip clubs, adult stores, sends the right message. This restricts access for patients and sends a close-minded and hurtful message. That is not the message the county is looking to show in accepting, welcoming environment to foster growth, economic development, and inviting places for people to stay at, move to, and live their lives at the end, want, even if I, excuse me, even if that includes people using a newly illegal but always misunderstood plant for treatment and pain and other various serious elements. Again, I have a deal on proposed property on the north end of McLaughlin Boulevard that we brought back to life. It's been a longtime vacant property for about 15 years. I'm looking to put about $100,000 in this location, and I don't want to do it with any type of miscommunication. I'm here, like a lot of other prospective medical marijuana business people, in professional fashion, looking to work with you hand-in-hand, side-by-side. I've done this in other communities. I have other clubs in the southern part of the state, and I'm looking to bring a quality access point for medical marijuana patients here. I believe, instead of imposing these strict buffers at a 2,000-foot, based on whatever reason you guys have come to, it deserves the ability to take the time and look at other buffers, I think 1,000-foot or 1,500-foot, with also the possibility of an exception. Maybe imposing a 1,500 to 1,600-foot buffer tonight from school zones to not show normalization and the proliferation through the schools would maybe be additional regulation, being that to get past the 1,600-foot, you have to cross a four-lane highway or greater. In that case, obviously, any teacher, principal, or anybody else that let these kids walk from Guiley Elementary School across a four-lane highway, well, I think we'd have other things to talk about, and the fact that they might cross by my store that they wouldn't have access into anyway. If they don't have a card, they're not of age of anybody else. If they are, their parents are in there getting a medication for them and helping them as a kid with a very serious condition that the state's allowed. Mr. Savis, you come down and say that you guys aren't banning it, but in through your actions, you guys are. By taking these restrictive buffers, you're saying, "I'm doing my job, I'm doing this," and we're not banning it, but through your proposed regulations and that map, it shows that it's exactly what you want to do by not letting anybody else in that area in this county.
So, question for you. Have you approached Milwaukee about a location?
I have.
So, how about Happy Valley?
500-foot into your county.
How about Happy Valley?
I like the location I'm at. It's a big location. It's underserved. It's a building that hasn't been utilized in a long time, and actually is an eyesore on your gateway going into Borland. I'm looking, again, to put about $100,000 in this building, put a whole new facade on it, dress up the front, and it ain't going to look like a nasty building it is. I know a lot of people would say, "Well, it could be something else," but there's been proposals, opportunity for everywhere for years, and nobody's done it. The only people that are going in these vacant buildings are medical marijuana entrepreneurs. I sold commercial real estate for Cusman Wakefield for five years. I talked to many commercial real estate brokers here, and they all laugh. They say our economics is a joke until it comes to the fact you go into a spot where a medical marijuana dispensary or a growth location is a viable option, and then you got multiple offers, five or six on the table.
You answered my question, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mike Bolins and Joe Haverley. Joe? Joe? Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Mullins from unincorporated Clackamas County. Hello again. I'm glad to hear you're working with the vets. We assisted the vets in opening a cannabis farm for returning vets from, in fact, SEAL Team Six and SEAL Team Four. It's completely owned and operated by them. They're pulling many of their comrades in. As you know, Oregon now allows PTSD as one of these symptoms. It's an amazing place where they can come back and do their re-entry into society. It's really, really been working well. It's owned and operated by them. First of all, I'd like to state that contrary to popular belief, the state has stated that cannabis is medicine here, so let's get by on that. The rules and setbacks that you have imposed here are absolutely unreasonable and acceptable. I stated that when I was on the committee, and in fact, it's nothing more than a ban. But we do notice that you're allowing large businesses such as MR Industries in doing, you know, multi-million-dollar facilities right here on 224. By the way, my kids grew up around marijuana and patients, and they're drug-fiancé students. So what happens when those students go home to parents who are abusing drugs? Do kids watch TV? And sooner or later, kids are going to have to travel past a dispensary sometime. So what are we really accomplishing by putting in a 1,500-foot buffer from a liquor store? As far as economic development goes, Colorado has 16,000 marijuana industry jobs. 10,000 of those are new in 2014 alone. It has generated over 70 million in revenue. Colorado is building new schools. We're closing them. If you want to protect kids, fund schools and after-school activities. Thank you very much. By the way, I have two locations I'd like to have open too, if you want to start handing out exceptions.
Joe?
In behalf of the Citizens Watch Committee, we do not approve of marijuana dispensaries in Clackamas County. I know it's already been passed that you're going to have marijuana in our county. The state has passed the law, but the federal government has not. Federal law outtrumps state law. Thank God my children are adults 50 and 54. This is a tremendous temptation for young children. I've been in the medical field for over 35 years. I'm a retired nurse. I've seen drug abuse big time, and a lot of them were marijuana smokers. So protect our children. Take this and be very, very limited in behalf of the children, so it's not easy for anyone to attempt to get this. And they say they can't get it, but the same way they say they can't get beer, they just have someone go in there and get it for them and then bring it back out. And then a young lady was saying that marijuana, they come from other states and take marijuana back. That's against the law to take it back because the other states have not approved it and the government, the federal government hasn't approved it. And they can get in serious trouble when they do that. So I don't encourage anyone to do that. And I would not encourage people to move to Oregon because they can get their marijuana. So you Commissioners, you do a good job. You three are outstanding. And be very limited and protect our children and make the buffers like they need to be. We need to protect our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, that's the last card I have, and with that, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, I thought I got that one. Matt? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for giving me some time, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Matt Wallstatter. I am an OMMP patient, have been since 2006. I am also a grower and a dispensary owner. I'm also a parent of a five-year-old, and I live in Portland. But as a parent, safety is incredibly important to me. We're here today because medical marijuana and recreational marijuana are a fact. There are four states plus District of Columbia that have recreational. There are 23 states plus DC that have medical. There are 10 more, at least 10 more, that have CBD laws that allow some medical marijuana, and Georgia just signed their law today. So this is happening. The states are the laboratories of democracy, and often the way we see federal change is beginning at the state level. There has also been federal movement. Our Congressman Blumenhauer and our Senators Wyden and Merkley are all working to address banking and tax issues and to also reschedule cannabis. So we're going to see this change at the federal level as well. It's just a matter of time. So the question is, if marijuana is here and it's a fact of our life, how do we want to handle it? And my answer is, we want to handle it in the safest way possible. We know that that means legal shops, legal growers. Last time I was here, a couple weeks ago, I mentioned to this commission that there are multiple studies that show that dispensaries actually make neighborhoods safer. One from the University of Denver, one from the Rand Corporation, and there are others as well. They show that when you put a dispensary in a neighborhood, you put security, you put attention, and that those neighborhoods become safer. They've also found in a separate Rand Corporation study that when you take a dispensary out of a neighborhood, it becomes less safe. So the idea that just because a dispensary is associated with marijuana, it creates danger is just patently false. Now, beyond that, we have a question of how we want to distribute cannabis. And so the question is, do you want it done on street corners by people who have to answer to nobody? Or do you want it done in a safe, compliant, state-regulated business? And I think that the answer to me is fairly obvious. Licensed-compliant shops are the best way to go. I said the same thing when I was here a couple weeks ago. Drug dealers don't check IDs, and that's true. At our shop, we do check IDs. So I think that when you have someone with a license at stake, who's jumped through all the hoops, created the security systems that you need, you're going to have a much safer environment for medical and recreational marijuana, both. I would just also like to add, we are looking at opening a dispensary hopefully in Clackamas County. It's not clear to me from the wording of the statute, but with regard to zoning, we urge you to consider light industrial as well as retail zoning. That would be a compliant use to have a retail space and light industrial. It's done pretty regularly, so I just urge you guys to consider that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Nicole?
Hi there. My name is Nicole Moore from Kaiser, and I'm actually looking to work with Jeremy at Sweet Leaf with opening the dispensary here, and I would be making edibles and whatnot. But I came up here to actually talk about postponing the vote. If you guys could push back on that to the 30th, I think is when your next discussion could or would be, if you didn't possibly vote this evening, since you're not all here. I feel it would be much more appropriate and fair for the rest of us as a community if we're trying to actually make it fair for everybody here, that you guys all actually have an opinion and not just the three of you. Not that I don't value all yours. Also, let's see here, the school limit. I'd like to actually request that we put it at 1,500 feet if possible. It'd be fair. It kind of falls in the middle somewhere in there between the state and what you guys are proposing. It would allow for other businesses to open in areas that are not doing so well in your community, and we can bring things back to life, as Jeremy had said as well earlier. I think that is actually it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Schrader, I think, or was it the other? Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. And ask the clerk to read, take the poll.
Sure. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. The motion has been approved. And ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 04-2015, an ordinance amending the Clackamas County Code to add Chapter 8.09, establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Schrader?
Well, I think we have to read the motion in entirety. You want to read the whole thing?
Oh, I move we adopt ordinance number 04-2015, amending the Clackamas County Code to add Chapter 8.09, establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes. So I just want to say that the people that are going to be working on this are lawmakers in the state legislature that are actively involved in Measure 91 stuff, which we're hearing on a daily basis, different iterations of that, including perhaps making recreational marijuana available for sale in dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries, possibly. So, you know, we're quite uncertain. We're doing, I think, staff, Mr. Chandler read earlier or said earlier in his presentation that we can relax these to be compliant with law if necessary and to make it, to conform. The cities will also be doing this, so hopefully by some period of time, when the legislature's done making the lawmaking of this, we'll have a better idea as to how to make ours and what our regulations are. It could be that our ordinances might be moot, that state law might preempt us from actually enforcing any of this. So we don't know what the future holds. So that's really, I would be lobbying in the legislature for those of you who are for or against medical marijuana dispensaries or for the recreational piece as far as the distances or the restrictions, the time, place, and manner. But time, place, and manner is, was established before we ever got involved in this, and we have our opportunity to impose a moratorium and at this point propose the ordinance. So that's all I wanted to say.
Great. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, this is, as far as I'm concerned, I've always felt this was a no-win situation. It pits the federal government against states' rights, which has been a tension in this country since its inception. And I'm finding it fascinating that we're arguing states' rights versus the auspice of the federal government. I don't think that, unfortunately, that's probably a question that we, as county commissioners, can't directly answer, but I think that is a legitimate tension. I prefer to err right now on the side of caution with this. I also think that nothing, move ahead with this now, and we'll see what happens in the future. And we would have an opportunity to revisit things. However, I think this is the, I think, under the circumstances, this is about the best we can do as thoughtful people who are wrestling, in my mind, with an extremely difficult issue and problem.
Well, you know, for me, I think that keeping it within the UGB, Urban Growth Boundary, is important because the number of police or sheriff's officers we have outside the urban growth boundary is minimal at best. And since it's an all-cash business, I have some great concerns about all that cash and marijuana sitting around some building somewhere. Originally, I thought that we would consider looking at that other aspect outside the UGB, but, you know, that safe access comment that somebody made in support actually worries me more in the rural areas than it does on McLaughlin Boulevard, where we have city police on both sides and the sheriff in the middle. You know, I know this is going to, this is going to be a huge change for us. I mean, it's probably, you know, originally, we were in a moratorium. We decided to get it done early, and we worked really hard to negotiate something reasonable. But it really scares me, frankly, that Oregon could become a marijuana tourism state. It scares, scares me to death. And in southern Oregon, there's hundreds of growers in southern Oregon, and they can grow it outside because it grows well down there. And what worries me in the rural community is that when it's, when they start lighting it at night, putting razor wire around it, and fence you can't see through, and they've got people walking around with guns and dogs, all those things really worry me, especially since I just moved to a rural area. So it really worries me. So I plan on supporting this vote tonight, and then we can look at it further as things come along. I'm sure that whatever the state does is going to, I mean, the legislature does and OLCC does, will have a huge impact on our decision tonight, and I think we should just wait to see what happens. So are we ready for a vote? Clerk, let me see. Clerk, would you take the poll?
Sure. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. The motion is approved.